This meeting of the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee Policy Subcommittee to order. So we're going to start by reviewing face covering policy EBCFA.
Carol, you said you wanted to bring something up about this. I think I have a couple of things to add too.
Just that Janelle had brought this to my attention, just that we had to update this information and on the on the website and the policy, we had said
Oh, yeah.
The spring, we were going to change it. So there was, there was another one in here too that she had.
There was a couple of policies we did approve at the end of the year, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't, okay, so they haven't got up on the website yet?
Right, but maybe that's all we have to do, but I, yeah.
I do want to suggest a couple of changes on the face covering one up.
Okay.
I strongly suspect this is going to be an issue again this year.
Yes, I.
Second paragraph, it says, at the, the end of the last sentence there says vocal mandates. I think we just, in law, I think we just strike local mandates and just keep it as local law. So follow off federal, state and local strike mandates as supported by, and just keep law regarding face coverings. It talks about any decision to use, to require face coverings requires a vote by the school committee and then down bullet points there, number one, it says administration consider guidance and have a written procedure on when masks will be required and when they can be removed. I think we should, since the committee will be voting on any requirement, I think we should just add in a line there about the procedure be reviewed and approved by the committee. And then, one part I think we might want to consider adding to this is this came up the last time we had this in place, the last time these were required, came up about discipline for people who don't follow this policy. So I think we should put a sentence or two in here about discipline if you violate this policy. And I would just suggest the language say something to the effect of no disciplinary action shall be taken against any student or staff for violating this policy, something to that effect, because really not interested in teachers or anybody else becoming mask police.
Where do you want to put that, Mike?
I think maybe just at the, at the very end. So.
So can I just ask two questions?
Yeah.
You said add in procedure to be reviewed and did you say and voted on by the committee or?
So it already has that, voted is already up at the beginning. Second paragraph starts with any decision to require face coverings.
Okay, yeah.
Requires a vote by the committee.
Okay, so just add in.
And then down under future parameters, number one, says administration will consider the recommendations and guidance and then it's basically if a decision is to require them, there must be a written plan and procedure in place as to when they will be required and when they will be.
Plan and procedures, okay.
So at the end of that paragraph, just say the procedure will be, should be approved by the school committee. That would basically be
Yep.
When it comes time for that vote, just the information that we have reviewed would be.
Would be that, yeah, that makes sense. And then the other part about the discipline, no disciplinary actions. For that, should it say something along the lines of if it's not a law, because if it's a law?
If it's a law and someone breaks the law, we call the police.
Right.
If it's a policy that we have in our school, we decide what the discipline would be.
Okay, I got, I got what you're saying.
Like, yes, I'm sure there's a procedure for that, but.
No, that's fair. I wanted to make sure that we were, that, that, I agree.
Is it, can I ask her? I don't know how to do that. I'm just.
Oh, yeah, no, okay.
I just want, so the mandate is something different than a law? So are you, there wouldn't be laws on this, would there?
When we were, we wrote this with Jeff and when that was coming up for discussion, that was, you know, the definition of those terms was back and forth, so we decided if it's a law, it's a law, you gotta follow it.
Yeah, the mandates were coming from the Board of Health. And if you remember back in, this was back when we were lifting the mask mandate, February 28th. Berlin brought in their Board of Health and said, we couldn't lift it at BMS, we could lift it at Tohonto and Boylston because, but Berlin couldn't because their Board of Health.
Yeah, they had jurisdiction over the building.
They had jurisdiction over the building and the Board of Health basically said, not the school. That's left up to the schools.
Yeah, you, you had to go to the meeting and make.
Yes, I had to go to the meeting. I was, I believe I was chair at the time.
Yeah.
So are they considered the law, are they considered the law?
No.
It's totally.
A mandate is different than a law and that's what we learned through this process, process.
That was their mandate.
Yep, and they basically by bringing in the Board of Health and kind of doing the footwork to figure out whose umbrella it fell under, we got, we learned that the Board of Health said, no, even though it's a town building and even though all town buildings have mask mandates, we don't mandate for the schools. It's a separate entity. That's the school committee's job.
Okay.
Is that how, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, that's exactly.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Oh, this is for you. Did you get one? In the second page has, I believe it added in, I don't know how it differs. Oh, I see what she did. She broke it into laws and policies.
I think this is maybe good information to use to think about this policy, but I don't, is she wanting us to include this?
No, no, I asked her to give, I said, you know, with your, with your medical background, what do you?
Okay.
Because I think, I believe that she, when she wrote it, she put in all of her medical pieces at the end, because I wanted to know her.
Yeah.
Her thoughts, because she had given us that, that thing before.
Right, oh, yeah, all the sightings.
These are the kinds of like supporting documents that do, do we include someplace? It's sort of like, we're going to run into that again with the, when we're talking about the fingerprinting, the
Right.
Safety. Do we ever include this or?
So this is from Lisa?
This is from Lisa, yeah.
I mean, I think we, I don't think we include it in the policy itself.
No.
But as documentation to review in order to make a decision.
Yeah.
I don't see the argument.
Do we put that on the drive then?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe we should title it somehow so that we know this isn't a thing that we're actually voting on, it's just sort of FYI type information.
Like a supporting document for that, where you put that, this is in the drive then?
This is in the drive. I just put it in this morning because I just got it from her.
Okay.
Oh, this morning, all right, yeah, so we should probably put it in the, when it comes time, so.
I do like her number three a lot. It does, I'm not sure it belongs in the policy, but she talks about the scientific evidence.
Yeah.
And there is a need to consider the harms associated with masking, particularly relevant concerns include the disruption of blood gases which induces fatigue, headaches, brain fog, inhalation of fibers, carcinogenic chemicals, like all that.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, but I don't think it's not, yeah, but it's, it's information more so than policy. I would agree, yeah.
When it comes time, whatever we finish up with this one, we should add it to the coming meeting as a vote, not just a first read. It's, the changes are simple enough. I don't think we get a first read.
Okay.
Since it is, you know, coming into flu season and whatnot.
Yes.
And I spoke to a nurse this morning. They, their, the question was asking, what is the policy going to be for this year for COVID?
Yes, it's already out there.
I think it's timely to get it voted on.
Yeah.
Bit of a overly dramatic child.
Ah, yes.
The call.
Overly dramatic.
Any other comments on this one?
No. Carol, you have the COVID-19 isolation exposure guidance in here?
Yeah, that's the other one that you now had given me. Like, I'm just, I'm adding this into business items of separate.
Yeah, so.
Just go under business items?
This will, yeah, for vote, yeah.
We just make sure we.
EBCFA, yeah.
So Mike, you'll get that?
I'll make the changes.
Yeah.
I'll make the changes.
You may want to put them in a different color just so that they see what they are.
Yeah, I'll.
Or something, something's.
Could you put the doc from Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah, so that came up today on the phone call with the nurse, Carol. We aren't still testing in school, are we?
No.
Okay.
That's why we need to pull that off. And then she just wanted to make sure that the, the school committee was comfortable with.
With not testing.
Not testing and just as it reads there.
Yeah, leave it up to the parents. If parents want to test them, that's fine, like any other sickness.
So want to remove.
What is, is that in here? Does it say testing in here?
This is from 2022, this is the old.
Right, to that has to come off.
But is, I don't think that's in here. Is there anything about testing in here?
No, no, that's just face covering. So I'm looking at this.
Yes, I put that in. That was something that Janelle gave to me and I think it's because, and we can double check with her, that should be, that's still, we think on the website. We have to look and see if that's anything about, I think it is still there. Among many things that are wrong about the website. So that has to be pulled off.
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be great.
She just somewhat, have us pull it off without.
Yeah, because we're not, that was, this was part of the return to school. And then it changed even after that, they updated. And I think eventually we got to the point where if you're sick, stay home, otherwise we're not doing anything.
You didn't have to wear a mask.
We're not buying new tests, we're not paying for that, like if you're sick, stay home, otherwise treat it like, yeah.
All right, so are we done with EBCFA?
I'm also.
Anything else you want to add, Carol?
No, that's fine.
So the next one is policy IHAMA. It's the parental notification relative to sex education. With all of the emails that we have received from parents who are concerned, we are suggesting the following language. At the, the beginning of the second paragraph, at the beginning of each school year, and this is Mike's suggestion, all parents guardians of students in our schools will be notified and writing the courses and curriculum we offer that include human sexual, sexual education or human sexuality or gender ideology issues.
Yeah, the change there, it's, it's only those last three, four words is the change.
Yes, yep, as a matter of fact, you're right, because I actually remember, I was going to say that sounds very similar to the other one. You're right.
Yeah, it's, so this is, because of all the feedback we got, the parents, they're pretty passionate about this idea, I'll say. And so I, I don't really think it's our place to ban any type of teaching or materials or anything. So I think this is, what I could come up with is the easiest way to, maybe, what's the word I'm looking for?
Oh, like, it's like a, it's meeting in the middle.
Yeah, compromise, I guess, right?
Yep. So did.
We're not saying you can or can't do it, but if you're going to do it, just notify.
Yeah, I also, right, and I would also, I think the bigger discussion down the road, and I know we were talking about this yesterday in the, in the subcommittee meeting. I don't, we don't know what direction the new frameworks are going to take. There's still a lot of unknowns about this, so it's almost like we, we have to see what, what happens from there. If, if this does come up as a topic, I explained the same thing to Julie and to, to Megan. You know, fifty percent of the population feels one way, to your point, just fifty percent of the population feels another way. So I think perhaps the option will be to come in and give not only this, but also an opt-out opportunity for parents who don't want, or, or I think clarifying more what would be said in there. Julie made a great point at one point. She said, I think it's just really about being kind to one another.
Yeah.
If that's what it's about, being kind to everybody, who can argue with that? It, it's just how, does he get into the specifics?
Yeah.
If it does at all.
Well, I think it's, yeah, and I totally agree with you. And they didn't vote on those frameworks yet.
No, no.
I felt like it was going to be at the end of August, but I feel like it didn't happen.
They extended it.
They didn't extend it.
Sure, right.
I think what's got people a little passionate about this, the fact that this came out and we have the new health classes, health teacher. So that combination, I think, has got people a little bit more aware of it. So again, that's why I thought this, this doesn't deny you from doing anything. It's just, and I don't think we have to wait for these new frameworks to come out. I mean, if you're going to talk about this stuff, just let parents know, especially for the.
And it, and it has, and it has been, I mean.
I think it's going to be a bigger conversation later in, in either this year or next year.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to do more about this, but for now, I think this might help people relax a little bit.
I, also, I spoke with Cindy, she was working with the, the health teacher. She, she's, Cindy was putting out something to her staff or to her parents about the health curriculum. Also, the, the teacher is putting out what she teaches by grade level, what topics that she teaches.
That's why, so she's working on that right now. So that's, that's great. I think parents can see that and she'll,
she'll do it, yes, and she'll do it between the two schools, obviously. So I think that Cindy has just been kind of guiding her with that, that response. And we've talked about this topic and she, she's following the 1999 curriculum frameworks for health. Very benign frameworks.
And we were talking about this back then.
So with, they were, so Megan had suggested I put something out in the newsletter about this. I, I can, I happy to.
I think that might be wise. It doesn't have to be very long. I do think we're forgetting people coming, not just the emails that you've seen. People are approaching others at school events. They're really, they don't understand the difference. And I think Mike's right, it's just the fact that we just started a health curriculum and now they saw this health curriculum. And for the people that have read the health curriculum, some of the things in there, religiously, I'm not sure, you know, we may have an issue with students, parents, teachers wanting to. I think that them knowing that nothing has been passed yet, that, that we're still operating under the 1999 standards is going to make a lot of people feel a lot better. And then also I feel like putting this in here, which would say it follows the rest of the sex ed, which is you can accept, you can look at the curriculum, you can exempt your child. Because once they look at the curriculum, they may, they may be like, like Julie said, oh, this is just about accepting others. I'm okay with this. Or they might be like, I don't think my child should be a part of it, but I feel like if we put it in there now, it would make people feel better. You know, and if, if something changes, if we get mandated to teach it, then we revisit it and discuss it then, but for right now.
And, and this whole policy is based on state law.
Yes.
I imagine when this does come in, they're going to have to update that language too, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's why I'm.
Ahead of the curve.
Yep, mask and all that, yeah.
We're ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
We're, yes.
Yeah.
So that's what the change is to this one. It's just those four words at the end of that first sentence.
Yeah.
If that's the correct term, I mean, maybe that's not the correct term. I think I copied that directly from that framework.
I think you did, because I, I remember it being, that's why I was trying to figure out what was different.
I'm not trying to create anything on my own, I'm just trying to take what the state's giving us.
I think that's good.
Okay.
Which reminds me, Carol, I'm just going to bring this up. I happened to, as I was going through trying to look up some of these policies and just kind of do my homework ahead of time, I found policy KEC. It's public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials, really has nothing to do, I was, again, I was looking at like parent and curriculum. And it says, I found this a little bit, I didn't know this. Remember we were talking about how we really should go through and review all the policies? Because there's just little pieces that you don't know. It said, the school committee, though it is ultimately responsible for all curriculum and instructional materials, including library books, recognizes the need and right of students to free access to many different types of books and materials. And I was wondering if there is a way that, because we're ultimately responsible, if we could get a list of the books that are currently used, I don't know if a master list is available, if you even have that. Do you know what I mean?
Of all the books K through 12 that are used?
Well.
Available in the library, like a library inventory?
I, yeah, I think I'm more concerned, like, I feel like you guys vet the curriculum.
Yeah.
But if I'm correct, the library books are just ordered by the librarian.
Yes.
Since we, I didn't realize we were responsible, I mean, I understand we oversee, but I don't know if they have a catalog of that. And that might be a policy that we might, I don't know if we, we want a policy on library books, given some of the things that are happening lately.
Just start with a list since we are responsible.
Yeah, I mean, that was my biggest concern is all of a sudden I thought, wow, I don't know what's in the library. And we're responsible for that.
Do you want just library books or do you want books that the teachers use?
Oh, that, yeah, probably that too. But that, well, kind of, that's a huge undertaking, is it not? Maybe, maybe start with library books and we'll go from there.
I mean, there must be an inventory anyway as an asset, right? Like an asset inventory?
There probably is, right, an electronic card catalog. I, I'm imagining.
In the course write-ups, they don't list the books that they use, correct?
In high school level?
Yeah.
Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't.
That's true, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have that in elementary school levels.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it'd be hard for an elementary school teacher too, because sometimes you have a unit and you find a book and you.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm thinking of how expansive this is going to be, so it wouldn't be something.
So maybe then let's just start with the library books since that, like, I don't know anything that's in our library. I mean, do the students in the elementary school, they still go weekly?
They still, yeah.
They still go weekly? And that, oh, that's right, media. And then in middle school, do they visit the library?
They go with their classes. There's not so much.
It's not like a library class. It's project-based, correct? Okay. And then they can go to library like during, in high school too, like with during breaks or.
Right.
It's more of a resource than a, okay, that makes sense. I think that's how it was when I was in high school too. I, I know it was, okay. Yeah, if, if we could get a list of the library books, just to know what's, what's in there. I don't even know how we would go through, but I'd like to, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know. I feel, as soon as I found out we were responsible, it just made me nervous because I don't know what's in there.
What happens then? Like what, do you know what happens in districts? Do you, would you put a committee together to review the library? I, I don't know what hap, like what?
That's a good question.
There's thousands on the list, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, let's get the list and just see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, and then go from there. That might be, you know, because I'm not looking to ban any books or anything. I just want to make sure that everything that's. No, I just want to burn them. I just want to make sure, like, you know, you see a lot of things on, on the news. I just want to make sure that we're, what we have there is educational, fulfilling, you know, and appropriate. So.
Okay, I'll start with the list.
Yeah, thank you. And I like the, I do like the idea, Carol, of like, maybe eventually a committee, if there are, you know what I mean, if, if we feel like there's, it needs to be reviewed in greater detail. That would be something I would want parents involved into. Okay, so, oh, so IHMA, we, so that's all set?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we were going to.
That will go on for first read.
For first read. Okay. We have the policy of class size, student to adult classroom ratio, TBD. And we gave an example of the Wakefield Public Schools, their class size. They had like kindergarten, grades one through two, three through four, five through eight. And then the high school, wow, 125 to one.
Yeah, so we, we started looking at this last year.
Yeah.
Jeff, right, and then again, just over the idea of the, the bigger classrooms and how many, we started going down the conversation of how much do the paraprofessionals earn and possibly giving everybody across the ages or adding the number of them to different classrooms. We ended up going through with it with the kindergarten class, BES, right? But then the idea of, you know, instead of having this as be like a, you know, a one-off type of discussion every year that there might be a large class. Maybe if we just set some sort of limits and, you know, when you're planning in the spring, if you suspect you're going to have a larger class, I think, you know, to get another adult in the room just to help out, you know, I think these numbers for, probably might work for them. I think our numbers might want to be a little lower, not quite much. But if we, the thing I don't like about this example policy is there's so much language in here that gives you a million different outs. Like, oh, we want to stick to this, but if we have more than this, it's okay to have more than this because that's what we have. So it doesn't really make it, there's no way to really enforce it.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Do we know the size of the classrooms? I mean, I think the lower grade should be lower numbers and the upper grades, obviously the, I know they get bigger. And so you'd think you'd have less kids in the class, but you almost feel like when they're younger, they're learning to read and they need more individualized attention, whereas, you know, having taught grades three, four and five, I was far more vigilant in grade three and grade five could do a lot of their work by themselves and I could go and manage. But I'm wondering what the classroom, do we know what the classroom supports as far as the number of students? We never, we don't really have any.
Like a ratio of adults to children.
Well, they're all different sizes, so I think it would be hard to gather. So I guess it would be based on age.
John mentioned at BMS that it's about 18 is their sweet spot.
As far as the full class size, right, but they have a very small class size right now, so for kindergarten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but 18, yeah, 18 is, is ideal. We've had up to 20 before in the past, but.
I think if we had something like this, it would be easier budget-wise to say, we need this many, more pairs, less pairs, whatever it is. And then the other thing I was thinking, we could work in here somehow, it's at the high school level, you know, we want to talk about school choice, right? So if you set a graduating class size, if you have a number in mind, and then you think that particular class is going to be lower than that, that ties into, okay, well then we're going to open up that many school choice spots.
It's great.
It makes it easier to make that decision. And, and the school can only handle so, so much capacity of students anyway over in the high school. That's why we always look at it, the elementary school, school choice and how much to let, many students to let in. That's why we haven't let anybody in, in the elementary schools right now. The only, what I'm trying to think of is we have to look at the projections. We can easily do that once the students are here, but the kindergarten is always the, the tough one to call the beginning of the year. I mean, we can look at the census projections.
Yeah.
And put it in the budget as if, and then maybe we won't utilize it if we don't need an extra person, but at least it's there. I would just want to make sure, rather than, what I worried about this year, for example, in Boylston, is that we're going to get caught short if they got so many new students enrolled in there that we'd have to open up another class. And that has happened, I don't remember if it happened here, but it has happened in years past where we have so many, we're going to have to open up another, another classroom, another teacher, supplies.
What is the?
Correct, right.
What is the number, the, the highest number at Boylston Elementary? Do you know off the top of your head?
I just heard it changed because some students did not come, that they had planned, so. I'm going to say 2021.
Okay.
But it might even be a little less. I thought there were some three students.
Well, it's good as long as it hadn't jumped.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it didn't, it didn't go up, but, yeah, so we'd have to look at that at the beginning of the year, I think, and then project from there. Even with kindergarten.
Yes, I, I think if we were going to do anything about a policy like this, we would certainly need information from principals and Carol about.
I agree, yeah.
I am, I don't think I'm in a position to make that.
Oh, I don't think I'm, I, I don't think I am either. I feel like the, the people that are in the trenches would have a better idea.
Maybe we can put that as our action item then, get the, the three principals' feedback on what they think. So for the elementary school, you know, classroom, class size, classroom size probably, right? Then at the high school level, graduating class size. You know, what's their ideal? And then, you know, we want some bigger classes to have more opportunities for activities and things like that, right? More electives, if you get more kids, possibly take more electives, you can have more choices. But yeah, there is a limit that you.
Right.
Size of the building.
Well, I mean, you also, you also think about one-on-one. I mean, we're, we're trying, we're responsible for academics and we, we test that by, we, we know that by our test scores and how well the students are doing, small class sizes lend themselves to more attention, which is.
I definitely think that's more important.
Learning better.
Maybe it's not the case, but at the elementary school, that's probably a bigger priority than high school.
Oh, easily.
In the early grades in particular, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Look at what's happened with the colleges now. They can't get kids to do basic math because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I caught the tail end of what you said about that, but.
It's crazy. So maybe that's, that's our takeaway then, get some information from the principals.
That would be great, yeah.
And we have talked, like, to your point, we've talked about this a number of years. I'm moving it against putting this as a policy. Once we put it as a policy, this is so and so, if we go to 23 students
Right.
in one class, does that tip us over? It's up to us. I think, let, let me talk with the principals, we'll take some information back and see.
I mean, the other thing we could always write in the policy is that if they, it could be brought before. it could be brought before the school committee if they felt that, you know, a class could withstand more.
I think that's, there's something.
It says that the superintendent or his designee may, under their own authority, admit up to two, yeah.
Well, Lori, you know, that's a great point, because it also speaks to some classes that have less students in them, but more needs.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not the same, so it might be a, the class that has seventeen, eighteen students, but.
But you need that extra set of hands in there, you know?
Yes, so it, it fluctuates. Yeah, probably, it looks like there's some language.
Yeah, because you don't, you don't, you don't want it flimsy, but you also don't want it rigid, you want it somewhere in the middle, because there are always situations.
Recognizes that these might not be achievable for a given year, can authorize waivers, and there's something in here else, but.
Maybe.
Superintendent to do the appropriate analysis.
Or maybe you want it to, putting something in there about notifying you. Maybe that's the missing piece, is here's what, here's what our experience is, so you're aware of it and not.
Yeah, maybe tie it into the budget.
That's a great idea.
In the dark, here's our, here's what we're going through right now, here, so you're aware, we're going up to twenty-three students in kindergarten, but here's the situation.
Right, I think that's perfect, yeah.
So it's just a communication piece with the school committee, I don't know.
Yeah, I like that.
Above a policy, if he or she deems appropriate, how, how um, bringing, bringing the matter for, I don't know how you wanna say, bringing the matter for to the school committee prior to the decision being made.
Yeah.
For awareness.
Right. Anything else on?
So this one, we'll just, we'll
Yeah, we're gonna.
Consider it, and you'll talk to the principals, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we won't, would that go, that does not.
It won't go in the agenda.
Agenda now.
Okay.
Um, it will go to our next agenda here.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
Okay.
And, and I mean, the point, the purpose of this is to make sure we have the appropriate number of staff to handle it, so it's, it's not like, there's no other, there's only, no other agenda here, other than if we need more help, we, we are gonna get more.
And I also think it helps with the towns for them to understand that we're looking at best practices. On smaller class sizes for the smaller levels is really key, if we want those kids to, to thrive as they go through, the more attention.
Yeah, and I mean, at the high school, middle school, I mean, this goes children to teacher, we put children to, this was the driving force behind the assistant principal that we wanted to shoot, right, so whatever term that needs to be.
All right, and our last is fingerprinting, addition to background checks. And I see some areas highlighted here.
Oh, this was probably the one with my notes on it, I think I, I'll just go back again to this.
It's a child memory.
I know who I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt, but before we go on to this one, we talked a little bit again about this yesterday, and I gave, I have the copies of yesterday's meeting for you, so you can see what we talked about. We put a list together, the admin team, this summer, through our district improvement plan of, we looked at what we had, what we got this year, what we still know we need. So I submitted that to the subcommittee for review. One of them, to your point, is adding a teacher to Boyleston Elementary School. When Megan talked about adding two, we said, we don't need the two for next year, but we do need one more teacher, that's, so to your point about the budget and figuring out what, what our needs are versus wants.
Right, exactly.
That's the difference in justifying it by the numbers, so.
We want a playground, but we need a teacher.
Right, right, exactly.
So anyway, sorry, I'm sorry to.
No, no, that's very helpful.
So these are just some notes that I made to myself for the clar, the clarification purposes, when I brought this up in the report last time. This is what I had asked about considering.
Right.
So we said at the time we would consider it, but we're gonna bring it to the policy subcommittee to, whether we're going to integrate this, or if it's something that you just want. I, I'd like to put this on the website, I'd like to make parents aware, I know the principals have been using this, but do we want, other districts have incorporated this information into their policy? Or we can do it as a supporting document in the drive, it's whatever you.
I, I read through the bullet points, I think the bullet points are good to, it defines when you'll need it, when you want it. It seems reasonable to me.
I also like that they're not requiring classroom volunteers, chaperones on field trips where, you know, with no overnight component where there's other.
Right.
And, you know, because otherwise, that gets, gets so thick in the mud with all that, but the other ones, definitely.
Okay, yeah.
I, I mean, it just, I, I thought it was nice the way they split it up into, into the categories of when you would need it and when you wouldn't, because it makes sense.
It did, and that was so helpful to parents, the parent organization, link folks when they were trying to get volunteers.
Absolutely.
What do these people need to, they, they will do anything, but they just needed to know what they're responsible for. So we didn't want anybody caught short without the fingerprinting, when it really wasn't necessarily required, was it gonna be required by us, the district? Or not? So that's, that's why I wanted you to take a look at this. So, would, would this go on as, do you wanna add this? I mean, we, we didn't vote on it as a policy or addition, how do you, how do you do that?
So, yeah, should we vote on, should we put this in there, since it was in there last time, as a vote to add to the policy?
Yeah, I, I think we should. So, let's look at this one right now, all right?
Yep.
I think from, I mean, the first paragraph, that's just some explanation, we've kinda got that, so I would scratch out that first paragraph. But then everything down from that, I think we should add as-is, right?
Yes, I agree.
For V B R S D and whatever it means.
Yep.
Uh, and then we can add it, I think a good place to add it would be between the second and third paragraph, maybe?
Is it right in here? Now, Carol, I noticed that you started the bottom of the first paragraph, and then the third paragraph. So I, I can, I can put this, I'll put this text right in there.
Yeah.
Um, and put it in the drive.
Because that third, yeah, that third paragraph talks about what is direct and unmonitored contact, and that's in these bullet points here. So you, you give these bullet points, these are the times when you need them, these are the times when you don't. And then this paragraph defines, you know, says you need them with, uh, I think it's the third bullet point there. No, uh, second. Yeah. Maybe we can add that language in here, maybe. Yeah, 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 the second bullet point, volunteers who will have extended, direct, and unmonitored contact.
Do you feel like it should go after that paragraph?
Eh, eh, either way, I, I mean.
Yeah, I guess it really doesn't matter, because it, it could just be further explaining, yeah.
I think, you know, it further explains.
Yeah, what this is, yeah.
Three requirements for when you, or three bullet points for when you need a fingerprint.
Yep.
Overnight field trips, volunteer coaches, advisors, who will have, and then the term is extended, direct, and unmonitored contact with students. And that's, uh, right here, it goes on, that's the definition, direct and unmonitored contact is defined by D C or D C. So I think between those second and third paragraphs is where this would fit.
Okay, right, okay. And then the last part also, Mike, I'm sorry, the principal is unclear, you want that piece on the second page?
Yeah, I think.
I think that's helpful, yeah. Now, I noticed at the end of the background checks, there's parts that scratched, there are parts that are scratched out. I think that, that's, I don't know who scratched it out, but I agree with it, because it's, you actually stated here.
That was not mine. That was not part of what I had done, that was there already, that might have been, it looked like there was a revision done. Was there, let's see, oh, no.
That's interesting, yeah.
No, there's never been, it's never been touched, huh. But that was not, that was not made by anybody.
Yeah, that part's still in there online.
It is, okay. Do you, do you want, do we, do we keep that in there? I mean, it really is this, is it not? Says classroom volunteers, these individuals are volunteering in the classroom during the school day and are in the presence of school staff, these individuals are not required to provide fingerprinting to the district. Extended day volunteers, these individuals are volunteering before or after school, providing programming to our students, or our chaperones for overnight field trips, or extended day field trips, these individuals are required to provide fingerprinting to the district.
The only thing I could think of that would be captured in there would be the end of the year field day volunteers. Extended day volunteers.
So I don't feel like.
Because they have unmonitored contact with children sometimes.
Oh, extended day does, yeah, they'll take them to the bathroom and, like, around the playground.
Let's say.
Yeah, I'm doing homework and you guys are outside.
They're doing, like, stations or games or whatever.
Yeah.
You might have parent volunteers. Now, those days, they would fall under there, would they fall over here? Yeah, I think that one term actually covers just about anybody, the extended, direct, unmonitored contact, right?
So would we add that, but would we take this out, but add that bullet to the fingerprint background checked is required?
I think that last paragraph spe, I'm sorry, speaks to this, about the like, having the principal check and the likelihood of direct and unmonitored contact with students.
So keep this language.
Keep this language, but just scrap that.
Yeah, get what struck, get out what struck here.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so take one down. Excellent.
Lori, who, how does this work logistically? Do you revise this and send it to Nicole? Does Nicole revise this?
That's a good question. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going, I'll go in and I will revise this and put it together, and I'm gonna highlight the, the changes, so that the, um, the committee members can see where the change is.
Okay.
And this is going for a vote, right, because we reviewed it last time? Last time was the first read? Were we gonna vote last time, and?
Um, we kind of said we just, you know, it's okay for now, and then we were gonna revisit.
Yeah, because this was the only piece that we didn't know, I think.
Uh, we can put it off our vote, because I'm sure there's gonna be some volunteer opportunities coming up soon for people, right?
Yep.
So here, here's the thing. It's, if, if we never touch this, it's still fine, because the first paragraph uses the word may.
Right.
The superintendent may obtain. So the word may means you can, you don't have to.
Right.
So it's, kind of right now, it's at Carol's discretion. This sort of defines
Right.
and removes a little bit of your discretion, but also makes it easier for you to make a decision.
Hundred percent, yeah. We've already come, come across that, absolutely.
I mean, I don't really care if it goes for a vote or first read, I mean, it seems simple enough to.
It was in the drive for the last one, that's why I think it should be voted this time, because it was, you know, it was released to the public as well as the school committee, so.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing.
We're not changing anything, we're actually just putting, putting a piece in there, yeah. Yeah, so what I'll do, Carol, is I will go in and add in the, the additional ink language and show what's gonna be struck, so it's gonna be, look like a draft.
Okay.
Because they have to approve it before I can go through and take all that out and change the font, and then, once they approve it, I, as chair, will make sure that I send it over to Nicole. And then she would submit that to the drive, because I don't know how to do that.
She would submit it to M A S C, and they.
Yes, N A S C.
Figured that all out, we reached out to Dorothy and her, the person who helps her, and they explained us, to us, we have all of that set, but.
Perfect.
But you change it, so will you load this then onto the?
Yes.
Agenda, that's, so I'm keeping track of what we.
Into the drive.
Into the drive, yes. So that's one of the things that I wanted to know, is if Nicole wants us to put things in the drive for her, or if she wants to put them in herself. Uh, because Christie had cer, like, you know, every admin has different protocol ways that they like to organize. Christie liked to have the, the items sent to her, so that she could keep track of them and know they were in there. So we should probably just talk to Nicole before I leave, to see how she wants me to submit it. Um, whatever her preference is, I'm happy to do.
Can you touch base with her in the morning? She, she's actually at a funeral, so she had to leave, that's why Donna is here, so. Or just email her, I know that she, she was gonna be on, but she'll be in in the morn, first thing in the morning. We're also gonna try to have this agenda sent to the towns by twelve on Thursdays, just to ensure that they're getting there and posted, like, what we did the other day, so. They, because Boyleston only goes until Thursday at two.
Right.
So it's, Fridays are out, even if we have to revise and,
Yeah.
you know, to change some things, at least it's in, so I think she's.
So what I'll do is I'll get that, I'll get that to her today, and I will also talk, I will, in the email, I'll send it as a, you know, as an attachment, and just say, what, what would you like going forward? Here's what it is right now, and, and I'll let her know that after we approve it, I'll send her the final doc, sent to M A S C as well.
Great, she, no, she'd appreciate that.
She's great.
Yeah, she'll be wonderful to, to do, and then to let you know what's most comfortable. She's, she's very meticulous about ensuring that everything.
She really is, yeah.
Um, these, so these two, also, Lori, right, or whatever, I'm keeping track of here, where is the other ones? The, the other policies to add, E B C F A.
Oh, E B C F A, yeah.
E B C F A will be for vote, I H A M A will be a first read.
Okay, so I'll send that to her.
At fingerprinting will be a vote.
Yep, so I'll send those all to her.
Thank you. Sorry, I know I'm asking these.
No, I.
Policy was not something I said it before.
But I actually really appreciate the fact that we just went over everything, because then nothing gets lost in the mix.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because I'm writing here, here, so this is perfect.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
As long as you're keeping the notes, that's helpful. She can, she can come in the future, she came yesterday and did the subcommittee minutes, so she finished them today, sent them to Megan to review, to load, so that's.
Yeah. She's more efficient than me. Um, I'm long-winded. Oh, I love it. So, okay, so that's all set with that, and then are there any other future agenda items? I know we're going to hopefully, you know, maybe talk about the class size next time, uh, the possible class size. Is there anything else that needs to be reviewed? We haven't gotten an update from M A S C, probably sometimes they would sell out, send out like monthly, like, here's, these policies have been updated.
I haven't gotten a thing on that.
It's good.
Yeah, no, it's good, it means that everything's good, so.
I'm good, maybe we'll just start getting back into the regular schedule.
I think that's a good idea. At this point now that we're out of the weeds, yeah.
Yeah, things calm down a little bit.
Yeah, this, yeah, exactly, I'm not gonna even say it, because I don't, I don't want it to come back up.
I had, this is a policy question, or if it's a procedure. Yeah, yeah, do you wanna do that, and I can ask you about the things?
We can call it, you can do it.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right, I am going to, let's see what time it is, it is at one fifty-three, I am adjourning this meeting of the Berlin-Boyleston Regional Policy Subcommittee.